You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of ABK Media Group. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney, sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County. Every day at 9:00 AM, Southern living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, and welcome to another edition of Good Morning Gwinnett. I'm your host Audrey Bell Kearney. Hello to all my Gwinetians out there in Gwinnett land and all of you around the world who are listening to the show. Hope you're having a great day so far. Some beautiful, beautiful morning here in Gwinnett County. Right now it is around 75 degrees, going up to a high of only 82. That is gonna be a beautiful day, provided that there's not a lot of humidity that is. I don't think it's gonna be a lot of humidity, but it's right now it's a beautiful morning here. And I'm happy to be here with you guys, man. So I had, I've been doing a lot of work, man, but let me tell you something. I had an epiphany this morning and I just want to share this with you guys. I talk a lot about business on this show and I talk, you know, even I talk about stuff about Gwinnett County and what's going on. I talk a lot about business and, you know, and I do a lot of announcements about upcoming workshops and Toastmasters meetings and things like that. But I was, I've been so tired because I've been working on this, um, this sales funnel. And, um, it is really to push podcasting. I love podcasting, that's why I do it every four days a week, you know, that's a lot. For most people they do it once a week and they tell me that is a grueling schedule and it really is. However, it doesn't feel like work with me when I spend time with you guys on Monday through Thursday. It doesn't feel like work for me, so I'm loving it, like I'm loving, I'm having so much fun doing it. And I just wanna, I wanna keep figuring out how to make it better and better and better and bring on better, you know, bring on people and things like that. So, but I had an epiphany this morning. So I built a sales funnel and a sales funnel is really, it's like a, it's like a website that has one thing. Well, it is a website that has multiple things on it, but it's set up in a way where, let's say for instance, you go to the website, you wanna buy a pair of shoes, right? So you see this red pair of shoes and that's the first thing you see is, oh my God, I gotta have those shoes. So you click the button to buy the shoes and you click the button, it takes your order, but when you get to the next page, it says, you know what? You need to take this, you need to buy this purse to go with those shoes, right? You say, oh my God, I need that purse to go with those shoes. So then you click the button to add the purse to the shopping cart and then you get to the next page and say, oh my God, you need those earrings to go with that purse and those shoes. And you say, oh my God, I need those earrings to go with that person. So you click the next button. Now that could go on forever and ever and ever, right? But that's called a sales funnel, that's called a sales funnel. And what I like about it is that you start out with one thing in the funnel in your shopping cart, but it moves the customer through several different things. So by the time, you may have the shoes on sale for 27 dollars, but by the time they get to their shopping cart, they could've spent hundreds of dollars with you because they bought everything behind that first pair of shoes. So that's what I've been doing, so I built that sales funnel. Um, it took me, it really took me 30 days to do it because I went through a training course to make sure I set it up properly, right? And I think I did a really good job, um, my first time out, I'm really proud of it. But it was for my training course, um, Podcasting 101. And so I did that and I was so proud and I was, but when I tell you I was exhausted yesterday, once I got finished and launched it, I actually launched it yesterday. And when I say launched, I mean I put some Facebook ads behind it, so I had to go to Facebook, set up my ad campaign, set my budget up and all that stuff. Now ads are running to that, that particular, that particular course. And, um, I was like, okay, that's great, but when I tell you I was exhausted, I was exhausted. And it, it was, it was, it was, it was fun to put all the pieces together, but when I got finished, I just wanted to just flop down and just relax, right? But here's, here's the epiphany that I had. So under my company, ABK Media Group, I do a lot of different things. I do internet TV, TV channels, I do Roku channels, I do apps, I do funnels, I do all these different things, right? And this morning I woke up and I said, you know what, I just really love podcasting. Like all I wanna do is do my show and talk about the podcasting industry and talk about my community. That's really all I wanna do. And it was so funny because it was like this huge epiphany. Someone reached out to me yesterday, they have an online directory and they went, you know, they asked me if I wanna be in a director. And I was like, sure, so I paid my money to be in a director because you always marketing. You have to always figure out where to put your business. So I gave them ABK Media Group as my company name to put in the, in the online directory. And, um, you know, I did a really pretty ad and everything, um, about what I was doing. And I woke up this morning with this epiphany and I was like, you know what, I don't wanna do that. I, I just, I don't wanna do all that stuff. I wanna do podcasting, I wanna do Good Morning Gwinnett, I wanna share with people how to do podcasting. I love podcasting, I love this whole industry. So I restarted with the woman who ran the ad and I said, you know what, can you change that? Can you just put up Good Morning Gwinnett, um, and put all my information for that? That's all I wanna do. And when I tell you, um, it just felt so good. So I was like, okay, I need to go to a Good Morning Gwinnett website, I need to make some changes, um, and streamline some things. And it just felt really good, right? And so I shared all that to say, sometimes you have to make adjustments in your life. And I know this, this should be my inspiration at the end of the show, but I just felt, I'm feeling so good right now. And I feel good most days, um, some days I get up, I don't feel so well, but today I feel really good. But I, I feel, I feel even better because of this epiphany. Because when you're a business owner and if you're not like 100% crystal clear about your, your path, you can get lost on that path, right? You can get lost. I'm not, I wasn't lost because I knew what I was doing and I have customers that I serve under ABK, um, but it's not what I wanna do. And so, and it's a big moneymaker, okay? So here's the thing, ABK is a big moneymaker because I think my, my smallest service may be a hundred and 97 dollars, but my largest service is 5,000, over 5,000 dollars. So ABK is a big moneymaker for me, but it's not a passion, it's not a passion for me. Like this is my passion, right? And I have to embrace that, I have to embrace that I love this industry. And, 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 and even though ABK is a big moneymaker for me and I don't know, you know, where the money's gonna really come from, 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 you know, Good Morning Gwinnett, I do know that I, on that site, it'd be Gwinnett information, it'd be podcasting information, it'd be podcasts from other podcasters. So many amazing podcasters out there that I know. I got the book coming out, The Pod Chicks, amazing women who are doing these great podcasts. I'm like, man, I could, I could be spotlighting these women on my website, you know, just, I'm excited about that. I'm like, because here's what I realized and someone told me this in March, this is yours, you can make what you wanna make it. You know what I mean? And I think for me, excuse me, I think for me, I kinda get lost in that not being enough and it really is. And when I, when I start thinking about it not being enough, then I get stressed out. You know, because now I gotta add something to it, I gotta make it better, I gotta add something to it, I gotta make it better, I gotta do, I gotta do something else. It is enough and I'm declaring today that it is enough. So when I go outside, I'm not gonna have two business cards, one with the services and one with Good Morning Gwinnett. I'm gonna have one, Good Morning Gwinnett, that's my business card. And because normally when I go out, I have two business cards because it depends on where I am and what people are asking me about. And I'll say, oh yeah, I do like TV apps because it sounds sexy, you know what I mean? It sounds sexy when I say I build smart TV apps because it is sexy and it gets people attention, but it doesn't make me happy. And it's, it's not something super difficult for me to do, it just, I'm just not passionate about it. And, um, and I'm okay with that. So listen, I just wanted to share that with you guys to let you know that sometimes you just have to make adjustments, right? You just have to make adjustments about, um, your life, your business, whatever you're doing, your career. Sometimes you have to make, and you gotta be okay with that, and I'm okay with mine. It, it took, it took me a, a huge, going through that sales funnel and being drop dead tired this, this week. And just having this huge epiphany this morning that, girl, you like doing what you like doing, you love this industry. You've been doing it since about 2009, that's 10 years, right? I've been in media for like 16 years, 17 years going on now, but I've been doing podcasts for about 10 years. And so I can pick up and, and just kinda take this and love it and make it what I wanna make it and I'm, and I'm happy with that. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with you guys because I just feel so happy this morning. So listen, we are gonna do the Horoscopes now brought to us by astrologer Michael Theis, he is our resident astrologer here, Good Morning Gwinnett. And we're gonna kick it off with Aries. Aries, a long, quiet walk alone may help you sort out your thoughts. Don't get involved in joint financial ventures, your creative input will be appreciated by your boss. Okay, so Aries, you're gonna get some little appreciation from your boss today, sometimes I know you need that. Everybody needs to know that they appreciate it, especially when they're doing work. Taurus, insincere gestures or friendliness are likely to occur. You can enhance your cash flow if you pick up additional skills. Don't go out of your way and don't let those unexpected guests cost you money. Now I'm gonna say this, Taurus, you can pick up additional cash flow about acquiring new skills. Go out there, there's a lot of places to get new skills, trust me. You can go to, to a site called Udacity.com, that's U-D-A-C-I-T-Y.com. And no, I'm not an affiliate for them, I just know that they have some really great courses over there. So if you're looking to, especially in the tech space, if you're looking to up your, um, level up on your, on your experiences and your skills, that's a good place to go. Another good place to find out how to do stuff is Udemy. Udemy has a ton of classes over there, I mean, it's classes you could take on almost anything, right? Udemy is another one, that's U-D-E-M-Y.com, check them out. And my last one is, um, Lynda.com, that's L, I think it's L-Y-N-D-A, Lynda.com, another great place to, uh, get some training. Here's the thing about Lynda.com, if you go to the Gwinnett Public Library, they have partnered with Lynda.com. Um, and it may be at your library too, but here in Gwinnett, if you go to the Gwinnett Public Library, they have partnered with Lynda.com and a lot of trainings are free. All right, I just had to say that because I'm always learning, I'm constantly learning. And I think that's the way you move your life forward. All right, Gemini, face any emotional problems head on to avoid situations getting out of hand. You can expect changes in your living arrangements. Don't be too quick to judge partners or those you work with. Listen, don't be too quick to judge Gemini, get the facts first, know what's going on before you judge. Cancer, correspondence may not clear up issues. Try to enlist the help of those you trust in order to fulfill the demands being made on you. You have two choices, get out on your own or bend to your mate's whims. You got two choices Gemini, step out on faith or you stay there and you deal with the, with the nonsense. Those are your two choices today. Step out on faith, which means get out on your own, or you bend out to your mate, baby. Hey, it is what it is, you make them two choices. Leo, you'll be able to catch up on overdue paperwork, take time to do some writing. Uh, whether it's correspondence, poetry, or keeping a journal. So listen, I gotta tell you this, my, my sister-in-law gave me this really beautiful journal, right? I'm talking about so pretty, um, it's a, it's a, it's like a clear plastic, but it has butterflies on it. I love butterflies and I don't know if she knew that or not because I don't think I ever told her that. But when she gave it to me, I was like, okay, I know that this is gonna be cool because it has butterflies on it, but it's really nice and it's thick. Um, but anyway, so keeping a journal could be a good way to just get stuff out of your chest and out of your head. I keep, I got a bottle, I'm a paper junkie, so I got journals and books and notebooks all over my house, everywhere, kitchen, bedroom. Only place I don't have one is the bathroom. Okay, Leo, you are best to stick to base, to the basics. Work on getting ahead by picking up added skills that go, another skill one, I just, I just, I just said that in, in the other one. I think it was, uh, Aries or Gemini, I think it was Gemini, pick up some extra skills. You wanna level up, level up your skills, man, that do, that do wonders for your career, wonders for your business, wonders for you. Level up your skills, all right. Virgo, wait and get all the information before consulting your boss. This would be the day you have minor surgery, this would not be the day to have minor surgery. Be careful when dealing with investments. Now, I can't talk about this surgery because most of the time you have surgeries already scheduled, but if you're dealing with investments today Virgo, be careful, be, be very careful because you never know. You gotta mind the wallet, mind the wallet. All right, I'm gonna go to a song and I'll be back to bring you more of the Horoscopes brought to us by astrologer Michael Theis and right here on the Good Morning Gwinnett Show.
I wanna get you all alone now and go hide away from the lights, but I don't dare to, I'm too fragile. And for that I do apologize. Maybe someday we can work it out, but I'm afraid it's too late to try. Baby, I don't dare to love you and you know the reason why. Don't you know I'm way too weak to swim? Can't you feel the waves come crashing in? Running out of safety nets 'cause every night, every night, I fall down in the middle of the night screaming, oh my God, 'cause your love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. I reach out in the middle of the night screaming, oh my God, 'cause your love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. I think I'm all drunk and it feels wrong, but I'm not afraid to admit. I used to feel safe next to you babe, now I'm thinking I deserve a hit. Maybe someday we can work it out, but I'm afraid it's too late to try. Baby, I don't dare to love you and you know the reason why. Don't you know I'm way too weak to swim? Can't you feel the waves come crashing in? Running out of safety nets 'cause every night, every night, I fall down in the middle of the night screaming, oh my God, 'cause your love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. I reach out in the middle of the night screaming, oh my God, 'cause your love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. Love, love, love's too deep. Love, 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 love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. Oh yeah, oh no, 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 oh baby. Don't you know I'm way too weak to swim? Can't you feel the waves come crashing in? Running out of safety nets 'cause every night, every night, I fall down in the middle of the night screaming, oh my God, 'cause your love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. I reach out in the middle of the night screaming, oh my God, 'cause your love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. Too deep. Love, love, love's too deep. You know your love's too deep. You know your love's too deep.
Hey, welcome back to Good Morning Gwinnett, I'm your host Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily Horoscopes brought to us by astrologer Michael Theis. And we left off at Virgo, we're gonna pick it up at Libra. Libra, you should, uh, you should avoid getting involved in personal problems of colleagues, mind your business, that's what they're saying. You may find yourself in an emotional fix if you interfere with other people's problems. Again, mind your business, that's the second part of your horoscope. You may, you may have a rather hectic day due to events that children aren't involved in. Libra, stay out of folks' business today, don't, don't, don't do it, it's not, it's not your call. Scorpio, make changes in your domestic scene, spend some time with the ones you love. Pleasure trips will be satisfying, now is the time for completing hobbies that have, that you have been working on for a long time. You know, I think, I think this is gonna free me up to have a hobby, this whole just focusing on my podcasting industry. I think it's like, cause I don't have a hobby, I have a, I got a really, I got a brand new cricket and that's the machine that cuts stuff, brand new. When I tell you I haven't cut a thing on it, that's supposed to be my hobby, my husband bought it for me, I don't know, was it Christmas or birthday or mother's, it was something. But the thing is brand new, I took it out the box, probably got dust on it, anyway. I digress, I digress. All right, Sagittarius, you will find the excitement gratifying. Financial investments that deal with joint money, joint money can be extremely prosperous. Your boss may not be in the best of moods today, so stay away from them. If they're not in the best mood today, go in a different direction. You don't need that negative energy on you today Sagittarius. Capricorn, you can make money, but, but not through harebrained schemes or gambling. You can make money Cap, but you can't do it through some schemes or some gambling, it doesn't work today for you, it doesn't work. You can complete any project efficiently, especially if you put the effort in yourself. Compromising could be, compromise could be on the agenda today and you gotta compromise today unfortunately. Well, it could be a good thing, I'm not gonna say unfortunately, uh, Michael didn't say that, that was me. Aquarius, take time to help a friend who hasn't been feeling well. Travel for pleasure will be enticing, your tendency to dramatize may be a little much for your partner to take consistently, constantly. Listen, if you are drama queen or a drama king, it could be either one, nobody wants to hear that stuff. Your partner's saying, I don't wanna hear that, it's a little too much for me, I don't wanna hear that constantly, over and over being drama. Don't be a drama queen, queen. All right, my fellow fish Pisces, coworkers may not be giving you all the pertinent information, they're holding back, they're holding back. You can't do everything on your own, mm, let me say that to myself, you can't do everything on your own, you may be overreacting to a situation at hand. Ah, okay, I'm trying not to overreact to anything today. All right, guys, those are your Horoscopes brought to you by astrologer Michael Theis. And I'll be back tomorrow with more Horoscopes to tell you what's going on in the stars for you. But now we're gonna move on to some news over in Gwinnett County, see what's going on around the county here in Gwinnett. Uh, yeah, so there is a, there is a, there's a program called the 287 Program. Um, I talked about this a few months ago and, um, our, our, our sheriff here, he signed up for a second, he signed up for, for that program again. So what it does, it gives the sheriff's a certain powers over federal immigration and custom, custom enforcement authorities. So that's ICE, when you see ICE, that's what it stands for, Immigration and Custom Enforcement, that's what ICE stands for. But it gives, it gives the sheriff's department some kind of authorization over there. So, um, our, our county sheriff reauthorized our participation in the program back in May, Butch Conway. He praised the program, he said, it's a great tool and it has reduced and prevented crime here in Gwinnett County. But there's a lot of people that don't like the program and so, um, because they feel like it's, it's profiling, it's profiling, uh, immigrants who are here, especially the ones that are in jail, it's profiling them. And so this way, they're saying that with the program in place, it's not a good thing. And a lot of people who are immigrants are afraid to come forward for anything because they're afraid that they're gonna get sent back to their countries or things like that. Anyway, Commissioner Marlene Fosco is having an event to, um, to discuss that. So that event is intended to educate and provide information about the benefits and impacts of the 287G program. From various, varying local perspectives, according to a release that she released, there're gonna be six panels, three will be discussing the benefits and three will be discussing the impact of the program. And it is gonna be a nonpartisan moderator to, to moderate the whole thing. So, you know, I don't know a lot about the program, um, but obviously it's a big thing here because there are a lot of people who are against it. And so I think that the fact that Commissioner Fosco is having this event to, to show people that the, the impact and the benefits of the program, um, is, is a good thing, you know? So if you wanna go to that event, it's gonna be on July 31st and it's gonna be at 7:00 PM. It's gonna be at the Gwinnett Justice Administration Center Auditorium. And it's only limited to 200 members of the public, so if you wanna go, you gotta register and you can do that by going to, um, https://backslash backslash 287gdiscussion eventbrite.com. If you go to Eventbrite and probably just type in 287G discussion, it's 287, the letter G is in George, discussion. It, on Eventbrite, you'll probably be able to pull it up, I registered because I wanna go, um, and I wanna come back and bring you more information about that. But anyway, to read the, to read the full story, you can go to ajc.com and click on Gwinnett under the county tab and you can read the full story there. You know, we, we want our people to feel safe, but when people don't feel safe, other things can happen to them that makes them even less safer. There's a crime happening in a community where there are a lot of, um, immigrants, they're, they're not gonna go to authorities, feel like they're not safe either way. So they're, they're just in a bad situation and I feel bad for a lot of them. I know there's a lot of crime and a lot of people come over here and they bring crime, but for the ones that are not, they're the ones that are suffering and I feel bad for them. But anyway, moving right along. So State Senator Renee Unterman made a big fundraising splash as she jumped into the, um, into the open seventh congressional district race this summer. So I talked about this earlier, that she, uh, I think it might've been in, what's this, July? I think I talked about this in April, but she is running for the, um, seventh congressional district here in Gwinnett County. And, um, she is kicking butt when it comes to fundraising, she is kicking butts and taking names, so she's a Republican and she wants to cease. So so far in the second quarter of this year, she has raised 677,494 dollars. Wow, woo, she is killing it, so she, she's trying to, she's trying to make this thing happen, she's trying to make it happen. Now one of her, her, um, uh, opponents in for this seat is Democrat Kalen Bordeaux. And she's not doing bad either, she raised 287, 282,657 dollars for this quarter. But Kal, uh, Renee is kicking butt and taking names, so she's on her thing. There are other people that's running right now, um, Lynn Hemrick, she raised 502,000, I think that's for the record. Um, Richard McCormick, 314,000, Kalen Bordeaux. But there are some people in the race that hasn't raised a dime, so I don't know, it's funny because I actually interviewed one of them. People that haven't raised any money for this campaign, um, I don't know, it might be, if you guys are not raising money, you can't, you can't win an election without money, let me just say that. If you're running and you, you cannot win an election without any kind of money. So if you haven't raised any money, you may just wanna, I don't know. And these people are not playing games, they are raising now. She started out, I think I talked about this earlier, like in, um, it might've been April, when she got into the race and I talked about it. But anyway, so there are some people that are running right now for the same seat that hasn't raised any money. So there's Joe Prophet, Lisa Babich, who I actually interviewed last Thursday, um, but the interview got messed up because the transmitter wasn't connected. Um, Jacqueline Singh and Rashid Malik, nothing on the books yet. Listen guys, you gotta have some money to get in this thing, there's a, and there's a lot of people in this race, there's probably about 10, 12 people running for this seat. They want it, they're running, they are running, they are running. All right, Peachtree Corners, Mike Mason has some major projects ahead for the city. One of his major products is that Curiosity Lab, that's the one I'm always talking about because here's the thing, I'm a tech head for real. And, um, now listen, I don't know how to program and all that kind of stuff, not really. I mean, I do a little dabbling around here and there, but I love technology, I love innovation. And so Curiosity Lab is that type of thing. So Curiosity Lab is a partnership between Sprint and, um, in the Curiosity Lab. And they're doing things like the autonomous driving car over in Peachtree Corners. And so they have a lot of innovation coming out of there, so he is excited about that. So that's one of the big projects that they're, that they're really, um, planning to kick off. He was talking about this at the State of the City address, uh, last week on Monday, talking about, you know, what they were trying to do. So that's one of the things, the other thing is they got some major projects, um, Curiosity Lab is a bit, when that's gonna be scheduled for opening in September 11th, I think I'm gonna go to that. Um, which is gonna coincide with Smart City Expo for Atlanta, that's huge, like, I think I'm gonna go to that one, September 11th, 9/11 y'all, 9/11. Um, so that's, 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 that's the, uh, big, big thing there, Sprint and, and, cause Sprint has a 5G wireless network, right? And so they're gonna be running that with the autonomous car, like doing some testing over there. And I, I think I talked about this last week if I'm not mistaken. And I showed you a picture of what the track is gonna look like over at Curiosity Center, but, um, yeah, Curiosity Lab, I mean, but it's gonna, I'm sure that's gonna be beautiful. The other thing is, they have the town green, but they got other things they wanna do. Um, they wanna build a bridge over Peachtree Parkway and that's gonna be start, they're gonna start doing that construction on that in the next 30 to 60 days. The bridge is gonna connect the forum, which I love the forum and the forum is so nice. I go there to the Barnes and Noble over there a lot and, um, now it's a Barnes and Noble here and I love my, the shops where I live. Cause where I live is called a shops, but over there it's called a forum, but it's so nice over there. So I like to, I like to move around and visit different things. But here's the next big project is that bridge and it's gonna connect, um, the forum to the, to the town green, which is very nice, so that's gonna be. So he has a lot of good plans coming up, so we'll see what happens moving forward. Um, one thing I love about Gwinnett County is that they spend the money on revitalization. Now, I don't know if that's always been the case, but since I've been here over the last six, six years, they have spent some money on revitalization. All right, listen, going to a song and I'll be back to bring you more of the rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett, I'm right here on Good Morning Gwinnett, stay tuned.
Don't push, push me any farther to the edge, to the edge. Just come, come into the wild lands of my mind, of my mind. I never want to be in love again, again. I don't need your loving, I just steal your heart and cover myself. I don't need your loving, I don't need your loving, I can steal your heart and cover myself. I don't need your loving. Cover myself. I want, want you to feed all of my crazy needs, crazy needs. Oh, don't wait, wait too long, I will haunt you if I must, if I must. I never want to be in love again, again. I don't need your loving, I just steal your heart and cover myself. I don't need your loving.
Hey hey welcome back to Good Morning Gwinnett I'm your girl Audrey Bell currently giving you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County Well listen so the US Postal Service office right there on Oak Road I go to that post office sometime in Snellville they're gonna be moving over to West area drive To where the old SunTrust bank used to be because Snellville wants to take that and make that a part of the the new downtown development so they announced that project Um that they're gonna be doing it so the current post office on Oak Road is directly in the path of the new town center green Wa- a walking and biking path that will be a part of the town center development so that's gonna be moving soon the project is is expected to create a walkable city Center with homes businesses community spaces including a greenway so they're gonna be putting some new houses there they're gonna be putting um and that's kinda exciting Um some new businesses there and a community space so that's cool so if you go to that post office Pretty soon you'll be going over to the SunTrust where the old SunTrust building used to be over there on West area drive So that's where the new post office is gonna be hit thing too that's probably gonna be better parking cuz the parking right now is crazy a little bit crazy over there Because of the way this street is structured but anyway Um they're gonna be doing that soon so just know that that's coming down the pipe it's a lot of it's a lot of I just said it like there's a lot of redevelopment going on all around and it's a great thing Um you can make it especially like when they put these walking trails in these beautiful parks and like in Lawrenceville where I live at They have like a beautiful town green they have like this beautiful space where they do the movies they have like some they just put in like some park seats on the other side over it's I'm talking about just lovely Like I I can't say enough because I like it so much I like it's really urban suburban living I love it anyway Alright so the planning commissioner is having a a hearing today that's in Buford if you wanna know more about that you can um check out the website City of Buford dot S O P H I city S O P H I city so city of Buford dot S O P H I city dot com it's gonna be from seven PM it's gonna start at seven PM tonight It's gonna be at Buford City Hall if you wanna know more about that the planning commission hearing if you wanna you got questions you can call seven seven zero nine four five six seven six one again that number seven seven zero nine four five six seven Six one if you wanna know more about that whole plan and what they're doing over in Buford they're gonna be having their commission meeting planning hearing Planning commission hearing tonight at seven PM at Buford City Hall so check it out if you wanna do that Hey listen if you wanna be a part of the um Gwinnett County Amateur Radio Emergency Service they're gonna be doing um A planning committee meeting tonight from six thirty to seven thirty um Gwinnett County EOC is gonna be located at Eight hundred High Hope Road in Lawrenceville I'm not even thinking about doing this you know uh you know I'm in radio I love this whole radio thing it'd be nice to be able to know how to serve my community by being a part of the Uh emergency uh radio emergency program amateur radio emergency program anyway if you wanna go to the planning committee meetings tonight six thirty to seven thirty And that's located eight hundred High Hope Road and that's gonna be in Lawrenceville Eight hundred High Hope Road Lawrenceville six thirty to seven thirty you wanna know more about uh Emergency radio amateur emergency radio services that's your opportunity alright listen I'm about to talk about some jobs I'm about to talk about some jobs so there's gonna be a job fair this Saturday from nine AM to one PM It's gonna be at Marty Marty is hiring right Marty is hiring they're having a job for this weekend The transit agency is hosting this job fair from nine AM to one PM Saturday at its headquarters on twenty four twenty four Piedmont Road in northeast Atlanta They're looking for bus drivers and this but the bus driver salary can be between sixteen thousand thirty eight cent and twenty three dollars and seventeen cents an hour They're looking for bus mechanics and they can make between twenty two dollars and eight cents to twenty five dollars and six cent an hour that's some good money You must be twenty one years of age to 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 be able to to apply for these jobs um you gotta be at least when you gotta have you bring your resume You gotta have a valid email address a valid telephone number you have to have a CDL's driver's license or a permit with passenger endorsement You must bring your high school diploma your GED or your high school or your degree to the to the to the event Be prepared for onsite interviews I talk about this all the time that's that's good money for somebody right If you are looking for a job that is good money for somebody and so you wanna make sure that you're prepared you gotta be twenty one Listen they didn't say this but I'm saying it you need to have a clean driver's record I they didn't say it I'm sure they forgot because I'm sure that's really important You need to have a clean driver's record you need to be able to have your high school diploma your GED or your degree and you gotta bring that with you to the to the event on Saturday be prepared for the interview to be on the spot Right you need to have a valid email address a valid phone number a CDL driver's license or a permit with a passenger endorsement these are the things you need to take These are the things you need to take applicants are urged to ride the train to Lindbergh Station across the street from the headquarters Ride ride the train get on over there be on time listen if I were you I'd be there eight o'clock if I needed your job especially a job starting out with sixteen thousand thirty eight cents Right that's to be a bus driver for Marty starts out between sixteen thousand thirty eight cent and goes up to twenty three thousand seventeen cents I'm sure that's probably based on experience they didn't say that but I'm sure that's what it based is based on um Bus mechanics can make between twenty two dollars and eight cents to twenty five dollars and six cents So that is decent money guys that is decent money nothing to sneeze at especially when you're not making any Alright if you wanna go hiking tonight they're gonna be hiking tonight fast paced hike Tuesday night it's that time again Six thirty to seven thirty they're gonna be hiking at the Buford Buford Dam on the lower outlook level over there So this is a fast paced hiking it's gonna be four miles if you like to hike but you can't do fast paces this may not be the event for you This is for people who like to hike fast because they wanna get it done in an hour they wanna do this trail in an hour so Um this is the version easy trail but the patience still allow for a good end day the end of the day workout so you wanna get your workout in It's fast paced though so if you're gonna be walking slow tonight don't go unless you know unless you got somebody walking with you The trail follows Lake Lanier and Chattahoochee shorelines through the forests of the area looping back around to where they began Don't bring your dogs cuz dogs are not allowed on on lower ridge don't take your dog they're not allowed Don't take your dog they're not allowed alright they're gonna meet up everybody that's walking in this group is gonna meet up next to the bathrooms in the lower level Uh lower out overlooked parking lot in the parking is free there they're gonna leave sharply promptly at six thirty PM It's gonna be a a fast paced hike for four miles if you know you can't do it don't go out there and hurt yourself be careful Alright that's all I got for you today I'm gonna go to my last song and I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna give you my inspiration of the day And um then we're gonna close it out so stay tuned I'll be right back Hey welcome back to Good Morning Gwinnett listen it's about I'm about to wrap it up for you guys today but I wanna give you a little bit of word of inspiration before I go this is my segment of the day where I wanna leave you something good So that you can finish out your day being inspired so here's what it says Okay here's my inspiration for the day you can start by setting the course you succeed by staying the course Let me say that again let me say that again you start by setting the course you succeed by staying the course I could have quit this game long time ago y'all long I could have quit this game and went back and got a job I could have been somebody's social media manager Digital marketer but this is my game this is my game I'm on this I got I'm on this journey journey to a million a million subscribers Or a million downloads for this show or both a million dollars in revenue for my business I'm on a journey I'm on a million dollar journey And and I've been on this journey for a long time and I'm not embarrassed to say that but I love what I do And I know that if I stay the course the success that I'm seeking I'm gonna hit it So the first thing you gotta do is start the course but in order to make it and succeed you gotta stay the course Listen that's all I got for you today thank you again for listening you could have been anywhere in the world but you spent the last forty three minutes right here with me and I appreciate you so much Share the show with a friend or a family member a colleague or an associate also if you missed an episode go back over to Good Morning Gwinnett and listen to it also if you wanna take the podcasting course cuz you wanna do what I do Go to podcasting one oh one dot pro P R O W W W dot podcasting one oh one that's the number one oh one Dot pro the class starts August the seventeenth it's gonna be Saturday it's gonna be a virtual online class I'll be live talking to you going Walking you through the steps to launch your podcast just like like I'm doing right now I do this Monday through Thursday And I love doing it and I also do one right after this called the pot chick and I talk about podcasting so I do two shows I do three really Uh because I love this industry it's a great industry if you got a message if you got a passion if you're a pastor if you're a speaker if you're an expert in something if you're a doctor if you're a chiropractor if you're a dentist There's a there's a place for you to be a podcaster if you're a writer share your stories you know talk to your audience You'll be surprised people listen to a lot of stuff there are six hundred and sixty thousand podcasts that may sound like a lot But in the big scheme of things when it comes to like that versus a YouTube channel YouTube has five billion channels So there's still a lot of space for us in the podcasting industry listen I'll be back again tomorrow God willing to bring you more of the rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County Um you take care you enjoy your day and until next time make it a great day bye y'all